Chat with that group of people. If you, yeah.
Some of their hair sections are.
It's straight in the middle.
Good morning.
I'll send you a picture of it.
I don't see Pastor Ken. Okay, all right. Good morning, it is 9:00 AM on Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, and I call this regularly scheduled business meeting of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners to order. For the record, I am Chairman Luke Comett, and Commissioners Stephen Bradshaw and Asia Williams are also present. We are missing a pastor today. Mr. Arn, would you be willing to give us a prayer?
Yeah, I'd prefer you guys not get me by a bolt of lightning.
Mr. Dupree, would you step forward and give us an invocation today, sir? Please rise.
Father God, we thank you for life. We thank you for allowing us to live in a place like this. Lord, I pray that you superintend our thoughts and our actions and our words in this meeting. That you be glorified, that we can take care of the business of the people that live here that is to the benefit of all of us who are in this county. Lord God, we pray that you speak through us, use us, and, Lord, give us wise decisions in harmony in our communication. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of the regular business meeting is for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the business of Bonner County publicly. Regular business meetings do not constitute public hearings wherein the public has the right to be heard on every agendized item. However, at the discretion of the Chair, everyone may be afforded an opportunity to speak on a particular issue if recognized by the Chair. Any unrecognized comments or disruptive behavior will be grounds for removal from the Board meeting by the Chair and may subject the person being removed to criminal prosecution according to law. The purpose for the public comment segment of the Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the Board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible Board action. The Board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for Board consideration at a future business meeting. Questions may be directed to individual Board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the Board's attention during the session. The Chair will not entertain under any circumstances comments derogatory in nature toward any Board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. The, this weekly meeting is designated for general external business of the Board, including but not limited to consideration of claims, consideration and approval of minute records, consideration and approval of proposed ordinances, review of license applications, adoption of necessary resolutions to conduct public hearings, the conduct such other business as may be scheduled, to conduct such business as may be required by Idaho Code. Our first agendized item today is to adopt the Order of Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the Order of Agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the Board?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 The motion carries. Our next agendized item is the Consent Agenda.
I'm going to move to amend the Consent Agenda to remove the MLD 0063-23. There's been some questions about the MLD, and I think it warrants additional review by the Board before it is approved. MLDs are significant in our county. Some of the concerns that were brought forth addressed the issues related to IDEQ, not providing construction general permit for the applicant. There are concerns about the building location permit and concerns about erosion. And so, given kind of the concerns that have come forth, I think it reasonable and appropriate to remove that one before we move forward with approving that on this consent agenda.
I will second your motion for the purpose of deliberation, and we have Rob Whittingham here, who is the member of the planning staff who is responsible for that particular MLD. Rob, could you address MLD 63-23, please?
Yes, Rob Whittingham, Planner for the Record. Title 12, Chapter 7 deals with erosion control, and it states that the following activities are exempt from Title 7, or Title 12, Chapter 7, road construction which proceeds in compliance with and is restricted by the Idaho Forest Practices Act, Idaho Code, Title 38, Chapter 13. And going to that till Title 38, Chapter 13, it states that, I didn't bring my glasses, no unit of the local government shall enact any ordinance, rule, or resolution which purports or purports to regulate forest practices on the forest land in this state and which conflicts with any provision of this chapter.
So it doesn't apply?
It doesn't apply. This has no impact on the minor land division, and it's regulated by external agencies, which can be addressed by them.
Thank you, Mr. Whittingham.
That was one of the issues that the writer brought forward was erosion. There were other issues, and so in order to do a thoughtful, thorough consideration of this minor land division, I'm just requesting that we remove it from this one, do a review, and then make a decision on it.
For myself, I went down after seeing the comments that were issued, and I spoke with planning staff, and from my perspective, to a certain degree, we're comparing apples and oranges. A minor land division deals with changing the arbitrary lines on a plat, whereas the concerns brought by the author of that are dealing with regulations that have nothing to do with the authority or the actual task of a minor land division. And so, for myself, I am satisfied with the explanation and that in regards to this tool, which is the plat of Webster Hills, that this particular item meets the criteria as set forth in Bonner County Revised Code.
I would just argue that it's reasonable to allow the full Board to have an understanding before a vote is taken on a minor land division, and for an individual Commissioner to request an answer is reasonable, but for the Board to give thoughtful consideration before moving forward with a minor land division is most reasonable for not just the Board, but also the public when they address a concern. Again, the individual who brought forth the detailed response to this minor land division is not only talking about erosion, there's concerns regarding whether or not permits were obtained. They have a building location permit. They have a question also as to whether or not we posted information timely. So it doesn't change to just wait just a little bit to make sure we fully understand this project. And so, in, in the absence of reading the full document, I'm going to put the letter into the record, but I'm again requesting that the Board just allow some time for thoughtful consideration review for this minor land division, given the concerns brought forth.
I have full understanding of the MLD, and the concerns brought forth in that letter have been addressed. They do not apply to any MLD, even if they have a construction permit or any other kind of permit, it would not have anything to do with the MLD. Therefore, it's irrelevant to the MLD. So that would be my stance on that.
So all the elements that she, so you guys are still talking about just erosion. So I listed other elements that do pertain to an MLD. So can you then go through the information that was presented to the Board with a consideration just that we review it and identify what you're saying we have no jurisdiction over? Because one could argue, if what she brings forth in this means the Board has no consideration, why are we doing an MLD? Because that means we have no authority over it. She's brought forth reasonable issues that she's just asking us to pay attention to. One of those, for example, is she questions when this information was posted and available to the public. That is an obligation of the county. And so, how has that been addressed by a comment about erosion?
I believe that the, going back to the apples and oranges, an MLD is arbitrary lines on mylar. When we start talking about erosion, we're talking about the physical conditions of a lot, which is not what the MLD is. We are looking at two different things, and this property owner has the right, and the planning staff has given their response, which satisfies my concerns.
But you again addressed erosion, and what I just said you didn't comment to. I said that one of the things the person brings forward is whether or not the information was provided, and you gave a response, not on the issue that the person is bringing forward, but again, on erosion. So even in the way that this dialogue is happening, it seems prudent that we pull back and say, if the only rebuttal you guys are giving to this detailed response on this particular MLD is about erosion, and there's more than erosion listed, it's reasonable to pull it from this consent agenda, review it fully, and then make a decision.
Is there any further deliberation?
Not for me.
Hearing none, roll call vote in regards to pulling the file mentioned, which is MLD 0063-23. Roll call vote.
Yes.
No.
No.
The motion fails. I would now entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda again.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I will step down from the Chair and second the motion. Is there any deliberation? Hearing none, roll call vote.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
The agenda has been, or the Consent Agenda has been approved. Our next agendized item is with Clerk Rosedale.
Morning Commissioners, morning everybody. Commissioners, before you, I have fiscal year '24 claims batch number 15 in the amount of $450,822.23, and demand batch number 15 in the amount of $459,372, totaling $910,194.23. The big items on the demand are, drumroll, $38,000 for Farm Bureau, which is casualty insurance, $18,000 for Eyelets, which is the law enforcement software, $187,000 for the USDA Colburn payment, $65,000 for healthcare administration fee, $26,000 for back release, $93,000 for medical claims. That's that.
I move to approve payment of the FY '24 claims and demands in batch number 15 totaling
I would second that.
There is a motion and a second to approve claims and demands in batch number 15. Is there any deliberation amongst the Board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
The motion carries.
Thank you Commissioners. Next, I have EMS batch number 15 in the amount of $25,864.07, and EMS demand batch number 15 in the amount of $144,888.24, totaling $170,752.31. The big EMS claim, it's one, it's $144,888.24, is for the construction of the station next door.
I move to approve payment of FY '24 EMS claims and demands in batch number 15 totaling
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve payment of EMS claims batch number 15. Is there any deliberation amongst the Board of Commissioners?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
The motion carries.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you Clerk Rosedale. Our next agendized item is with Chief Jeff Lindsey and EMS. Chief, are you out there?
I am here. Before you is a fire station sublease and use agreement. This is between us and the Sammo and Fire District. This agreement is between BCMS and the Sammo and Fire District for housing of a BCMS paramedic to provide ALS response, training, and community paramedicine to the eastern portions of Bonner County. This will be a month-to-month sublease with a rental fee of $50 a month, and this has been approved by legal.
Excellent. Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the fire station and sublease agreement between BCEMS and Sammo and Fire District.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation on this agendized item?
It's not in my folder, but you did say legal approved it, right Jeff?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any further deliberation?
None.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 The motion carries.
Good work Chief.
Thank you.
Our next agendized item is with Treasurer Clarissa Koster.
Morning everyone, Clarissa Koster, Bonner County Treasurer for the Record. I am requesting that the Board of County Commissioners accept the Treasurer Auditor Joint Quarterly Reports for the second quarter ending 3/31/2024 for both Bonner County and EMS. The ending balance for Bonner County is $45,401,680.74, and the ending balance for EMS
I move that we accept both the Bonner County and EMS Treasurer Auditor Joint Quarterly Reports for the second quarter ending 3/31/2024.
I would second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the Board? I'd like to bring to the public's attention that this report as presented does meet the requirements for, I forget the statute.
It's Idaho Code 31-2113.
That one, that the Treasurer and the Auditor present their quarterly statements so that we are in compliance with state law. Is there any other deliberation?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you Mrs. Koster. Our next agendized item is with Road and Bridge, and it most certainly is not Matt Mulder. We have instead Director Jason Topp.
Good morning Commissioners, Jason Topp, Director of Road and Bridge for the Record. So what I have for you today is two bid awards. The first one is for our magnesium chloride contract. So bids were received for the 2024 magnesium chloride procurement for two suppliers on April 3rd. I reviewed these bids and found them to be responsive and regular. The bids were received from GMCO Incorporated, formerly known as Roadwise, for the total amount of $699,680 at a unit price of $174.92 a ton. EnviroTech Services Incorporated for the total amount of $716,000 at a unit price of $179 a ton. These prices reflect a 9.5 increase, percent increase, over the prices from 2023, which in itself is 22% over what it was in '22. Despite adding an additional $200,000 to the budget line for magnesium chloride for this fiscal year, these amounts were still in excess of our budgeted amount. The quantity of product is needed in order to treat the typical 400 application miles with the higher traffic counts, and I recommend awarding the contract to GMCO Incorporated to best serve Bonner County. The $699,680 cost will come from budget line item 0028450 dust abatement red stabilization, which has a funded balance of $644,900, with the remaining $54,780 that will come from our 0028760 contract road, which has an unobligated remaining balance of $55,000.
So is that, my question for Jay, is that $55,000 after we pull this? So then you're going to have $220 left?
Yeah, in that contract line.
Pretty good budgeting, sir. Pretty close, okay.
I move to award contract for 4,000 tons of magnesium chloride to GMCO Inc. for the unit price submitted for a total amount of $699,680.00.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to accept the back chloride bid to GMCO. Is there any deliberation amongst the Board?
No.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
The motion carries.
All right, our second item. This is for asphalt projects for 2024. On April 3rd, Bonner County opened bids for Bonner County Asphalt Projects 2024, which will place new asphalt on Sunnyside Road and various asphalt aprons in the town of Blanchard. We received three bids, and I have reviewed them and found them to be responsive and regular. The base bid amounts are as followed. Interstate concrete and asphalt, $738,548.75. Woods crushing and hauling, $743,342. Whole asphalt and paving incorporated, $969,528. Based on these bids, Road and Bridge recommends awarding the contract Interstate Concrete and Asphalt to best serve Bonner County. Funds will come from 0028490 Pine Asphalt Mitch, which has a remaining balance of $765,882.
I move to award the Bonner County Asphalt Project 2024 to Interstate Concrete and Asphalt Inc. for an amount of $738,548.75, and allow the Board to sign the contract.
I would second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation on this agendized item?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, and our next agendized item is the District Two Commissioner Report.
All right, first, thank you all for condolences that people sent. It's much appreciated. May is a busy month, starting this weekend, the 4th, is our Blanchard Cemetery cleanup. I'll remind you, pine cones can be used for Christmas time. You can dump some cinnamon on them, and we're giving them away by the bag down there. So you're more than welcome to come and help. We're also going to try and incorporate some cleanup that highway because some people are dumping garbage along the way, unfortunately. Our Commissioner chat lineup for May the 7th is Idaho Department of Lands with Dan Brown. If you have lengthy questions, please submit them to me before, and not specific to your own project, your own land, your own culvert, because we need to make sure that it's generic enough for the community to get the information that we need. That is a, it's a big discussion with him. I know a lot of people have asked about how does the individual know when we are selling Idaho land? Because sometimes people will have it, they know that it's IDL land, and then all of a sudden it'll get sold, but they never saw a for sale sign. So those are good questions to ask, Dan. On the 14th, we will have Priest River Happy Agers Community Center. There's a lot happening in Priest River, a lot beyond just the difficult traffic. They want to talk about just the growth in that area and the different services that they're having. The 21st is going to be special needs presentation for adults 18 and over is what their service is. The month of May in general is Idaho Mental Health Day, and so on the 18th, there is going to be a mental health month art exhibit. If you didn't know that, exhibits are due by the 1st of May, but it's an opportunity to be part of a community where that is one of our kind of top issues in Bonner County. On the 11th of May, Wire Idaho is doing a talent hall at the Priest River Community Center. We are going to have a discussion with the community about this group's concerns with respect to cell tower placement and looking at whether or not Bonner County, they want Bonner County to adopt an ordinance regarding where cell towers get placed. The speaker is going to be Senator Scott Herndon, who's going to give a legislative report. It will start at 10:00 AM at that event. They've invited the entire community, doesn't matter where you're from, to kind of learn what they are learning from the state as well as other parts of the state of Idaho. It isn't specific to Bonner County that this is being discussed. There's a lot of discussions regarding cell towers, solar panels, and wind towers going on in our area. So I encourage you, if you have the time, to take a look at that. I have received a lot of questions regarding Sergeant-at-Arms. We don't have a Sergeant-at-Arms in Bonner County. We discussed that a couple weeks ago. I did tell people in this meeting also, if you have that question and you want it addressed by the Board, use your public comment to address that to the Board. And it's not, I don't know if fair is the right word, but it was a Board issue, so I would encourage you not to address the staff member, but address the Board who started that process. I also have had concerns regarding how we receive legal opinions. I am going to be meeting with the prosecutor today to go over legal opinion receipt and how we kind of are deliberating on some issues from things like, it always comes from planning, so from planning to MLDs to take a look at that. For the month of April, a lot of people have messaged me about wanting more understanding of our roadways and what that, how that impacts and interfaces with our Road and Bridge versus when the highway, when the state's responsible, and all of the patchwork we're seeing and kind of the big plan. So I am working on that. I am also still going to keep including mental health. Panhandle Health is going to look at doing a presentation related to opioid abuse as well as suicide prevention. West Bonner County School District has a desire to kind of up that knowledge and education in our community, so I'm going to try to help facilitate that. So with that, are there any questions for the chat, for the discussion that I gave on District Two Commissioner Report? Cheryl?
Commissioner and public, we're going to go back to the standing rules. The Board has taken the position that we do not entertain questions for any agendized items, and the opportunity follows with public comment.
So, so I'm going to remind you, and it keeps happening here, and I'm going to ask you to go and actually read the full public comment. So the agendized item is just my discussion, and we spend more time preventing people from asking a clarifying question of my, my report than we would if we just allowed them to. What you're able to do is address the agendized item when we're going to discussion where you say, or do you have a discussion, community member, do you want a public comment? You've said you don't want the public to comment on agendized items. This is not me asking for a comment, this is asking exactly what says in our statute, and I will read it to you directly, because it gives me, as a Commissioner, you're not, you're not respecting the role of another Commissioner, because it allows me to reach out to anybody in the public that's present and ask anything of them while they're here. And so if you look at 201, Conduct of Meetings, it says that. In addition to the fact that it, we're supposed to enable the citizens to have that dialogue. So I would respectfully request that you not insert the rule of the other items where you're saying, public, do you have a comment on this issue? Because I am asking the public if they have a question of me as it relates to my report.
Commissioner Williams, the concern that I have is being uniform in the manner in which the Board handles agendized item. I respect that your District Two Commissioner Report, which was placed back on the agenda, is an agendized item. is an agendized item. But as the ordinance clearly states, the chairman presides. I am presiding, and we are going to be consistent. The opportunity exists for the members of the public to reach out to you, be it by phone call, by appointment, but we are going to be consistent. And the question, it says, is for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the business of Bonner County publicly. So the questions in regards to your agendized item would come from the board. I have no questions in regards to your report.
No, no.
Commissioner Bracha, do you have any questions in regards to the Commissioner's report?
No, well, can you read the second sentence then?
Our next agendized item will be public comment. Thank you, Commissioner. Our first public comment, our first speaker today is Ms. Cheryl Messer, which she will be able to ask a question.
Cheryl Messer, for the record, and I am a resident of Bonner County. I, when I first attended a planning commission meeting probably about four or five years ago, it, I became aware that in our revised Code 12322, that it had things for prime agriculture characterized by slopes deeper than 30%, where access may be absent or limited to substandard road systems, et cetera. And in the soil, under Chapter Three of soils, the natural resources component from 2003, it states prime farmland, the slope is no more than 6%, which meant there was a conflict between the ordinance that was written and what our natural resources component said, along with the matrix that was written from the subarea compact or comprehensive plan that the individual areas wrote. It says for prime forest ag land greater than or equal to 20 acres, it was 0 to 30% and with the most differences in roads it had from gravel to paved, et cetera. So I had, since you guys have oversight over planning and you also appoint them, so you have a lot of control over them, and you have a control of overdoing ordinances, and this has not been addressed. I read over 700 pages trying to figure out in their planning stages, how did they come up with then this ordinance? Or how did this get written? Because the 10s and 20s were flipped, and this has created a lot of breakup of prime farmland. There's only two areas in this county that have really good, large, prime agriculture, and we keep breaking it up and breaking it up. And in the last planning and zoning, or planning committee meeting on April 2nd, they wanted to combine rural, put it all under rural residential or rural, and combine rural residential fives with forest ag 10s and forest ag 20s. Now, what's been happening in the county, to me, that says we'll be divided down to five acres everywhere, and we won't have large acreage for farmland as traditionally has been used here or agriculture. And I would ask you guys to look at that and redo the ordinance. All they did, somehow it got flipped between the 10s and 20s, and that's been used again to break up and break up and break up stuff. And we need this natural resource, prime farmland. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Our next public speaker and technology, before I call the next one up, would you please hit start on the timer? Ms. Diane Welly.
Yes, I'm just curious, the town hall that you had last week.
Ms. Welly, would you announce who you are and if you're a resident? Thank you, Ms. Welly.
The town hall you had last week, I'm curious how much that cost us? You talked greatly about how much the bantering costs and the meetings cost. I'm just curious how much that cost us? You won't answer? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welly. Our next public speaker is Mr. Dan Welly. Thank you, sir. Our next public speaker is Ms. Christine Lowe, but I don't see Christine.
She was going to be online, or he or she asked me to sign her name on that to make it in time, so.
Okay. Mr. Kevin Moore.
What are you, Kevin? Kevin Moore, Bonner County resident. So, yeah, the town hall, whatever, I think she was referencing last Thursday. So is that recorded and is that out of the public, whatever? Okay, I'm glad to hear that. And so as we were talking about the rezoning, I probably used the wrong term of the MLD 0063. It's kind of interesting to me, whatever, I think, and being as you guys don't respond back, whatever, throw this out to the public, I believe I've heard to the air, peripherally, that we're in mediation for I don't know how many millions of dollars of scenario just north of town here a little bit. I forget the gentleman's name, Mike something. And so it's interesting about erosion and all that, whatever, that we don't want to be more careful, because I'm pretty sure that there's a mediation going on, high dollar or whatever, because some county employees started a development in an area. So I'm hoping to hear more about that. I'm lacking on the real particulars. I'm just getting the peripheral stuff, but hopefully we're more careful as we steadily go forward on many of these things. And so now I'm going to go to parking, because several months ago or more, whatever, as we're talking about the EMS building here, there was some dialogue within these meetings about parking, parking, you know? Are we going to be lax in parking? And so there was some dialogue about that. And so recently, whatever, we determined that we're going to eliminate one more parking spot out here because Mr. Omot seemed to think that that wasn't proper. And so I'm just throwing it out there, whatever, that, that space had been there. I'm hoping that Ms. Lupton could come up with a timeframe that's, evidently that's been like that for who knows how many years, to where all of a sudden you determined that wasn't proper. And so hopefully other people can voice an opinion about that, because it sounds like, from what I gather, you know, we don't have enough parking as it is. And so I took picture of it as it originally was, and the curbing or whatever is there except for a little spot probably 30 feet behind that to show that there was some cautionary of parking too far to the, to the road. And so to me, it's just another silly little scenario that a belligerence or harassment or whatever kind of came to the fore. And so, yeah, then also you were talking about safety, whatever, and you started out a couple of months ago talking about black mold at the EMS station. So that was in one of these meetings, whatever, that I'm sure is recorded. So as your silly word or concern about the safety of the public, then I've also shown to you and others, whatever, of a broken rail that can cause, help cause a train derailment as for liquefaction of railroad bed. So hopefully you're still attuned to the safety of the public.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moore. Our next.
Since you mentioned black mold, I'm going to clarify again that Chief Lindsay has stated that that statement is not correct. There is no black mold in that station. They thought there was. It was tested, and there was no finding of black mold.
I appreciate that, but I do want to say that Mr. Omot brought it up that day.
I, I do, I do understand, but I want to clarify that there was none.
Our next public speaker is Ms. Jennifer Kramer.
Good morning, Jennifer Kramer, Bonner County resident, for the record. My comment is regarding public comment. And Luke, last night at the debate, there was a question asked about public comment and what the candidate's perspectives were on public comment. And I, this has come up before, but I, your answer was like something to the effect of, well, it's not required by statute, therefore. It was something to that effect. And so I guess I just want to put it out that if everything you were supposed to do had to be written down in a statute, it wouldn't, it would probably overflow this building. There are certain things that are just common sense. In, in your role as representing the public, hearing from the public is required in order for you to accurately represent us. And so I would just like everyone possibly to listen to that debate and as they vote on May 21st, to take that into serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Mr. Rick Kramer is our next public speaker.
Good morning, Rick Kramer, for the record, Bonner County resident. So I heard it brought up today, which we already knew, is that we don't have a Sergeant of Arms, and I would like to have it agendized to discuss. You share with us what Cameron's role is here. Well, I would appreciate that. And if we, if he's not a Sergeant of Arms, what is his role? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
I'll put your request on the agenda, Mr. Kramer.
Madam Clerk, who has signed up online? All right. Well, Mr. Rosedale, I see you're raising your hand. I'll write you down for the record.
On the meeting that we had Thursday, somebody, two people asked a question about Road and Bridge funds being, going to other taxing districts. And my comporler wasn't there, she's the one that knows this inside and out, but our treasurer brought this up. We levy for Bonner County roads. We have a, a Sandpoint Highway District, which levies for the roads in Sandpoint. Statute 40.801A basically says any of the Road and Bridge funds that are levied for property that lie within cities like Hope, that kind of thing, 40% of those go to, or 50%, sorry, I'm just thinking, statute 40, 50% of those go to those cities. So I want to correct that on the record. So I was mistaken when I said that on Thursday. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Rosedale. So we have no one signed up, but I see that Ms. Crawford has her hand up. Ms. Crawford?
Thank you. Reg Crawford, for the record, Bonner County. I'd like to return that, that minor land division that was discussed earlier. This MLD came into question because the owner slash applicant of these parcels has moved large equipment onto the property and has begun logging and excavation work that has included disturbing a significant amount of vegetation in the stream protection zone and rapid lightning. The applicant owns three parcels with stream frontage on rapid lightning. This MLD creates a fourth parcel behind the existing streamfront parcels. The newly created parcel will need a road created that will provide both ingress and egress, and it appears the owner applicant has begun to work to create this road. Work has included devegetation very close to, if not in, the stream bed and is creating significant runoff. The IDEQ has not received a general construction permit from this applicant, and the IDL, who is the enforcement arm for the Idaho Forest Protection Act, does not require notification from private landowners when they begin working on their own land. However, landowners are still responsible for following the protective measures of law. Bonner County Revised Code 12-711 requires a 75-foot back from shorelines for buildings, but unfortunately, given the quick turnaround from the BACC agenda being posted and the MLD being posted, it was insufficient time to determine whether the owner has applied for a BLP on any of the properties. The applicant has placed a small structure very close to the stream. The purpose of 12-710B is, quote, "to reduce erosion and sediment into waterways," unquote. The purpose of 12-720 states, quote, "The purpose of this subchapter is to protect property, surface water, and groundwater against significant adverse effects from excavation, filling, clearing, unstable earthworks, soil erosion, sedimentation, stormwater runoff, et cetera." These protections within the code would apply, but because Bonner County has removed MLDs from the subdivision code and under LUPA, there are not applicable protective measures that I have found. This was also made clear in the statements the Planning Department staff made just today. I urge you to address this. The land disturbances as of yesterday were reported to both IDEQ and IDL. Had comments been allowed prior to the vote, I would have urged you to act within the intent of the code to protect county water. Delaying approval of this MLD would have provided time for the agencies mentioned to review the owner applicant actions and to assure lawful compliance. It should be noted that the owner of this property, the applicant, sits on the Bonner County Zoning Commission. It is unfortunate look for our county and for this administration when those entrusted to protect our county's lands engage in destructive actions. Finally, I encourage this BOC to enroll current and future Planning and Zoning Commission members, as well as the entire Planning Department and the Stormwater Erosion Education Program, or SEEP, and is, as it is the only educational program in this region that offers certification and waterfront protection. To summarize, one, there is now zero opportunity.
Ms. Crawford, Ms. Crawford, your time has expired, but I will tell you that the majority of the planning staff.
Blah, blah, blah. If you're not going to let me finish, I had two things to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Crawford.
Can I, can I, Reg, please don't hang up. So in a prior meeting, I don't remember where it was, you said if there's time left over, you'll allow people to speak. She's reading something, and there's not that many people here. Can we just let her finish her thought? We shouldn't.
We are going to be consistent. There was three minutes.
But you said that, but this actually.
Thank you.
It is, it is consistent because you actually.
The timer was not on, and my response I was going to give you was actually in response to your question and that the planning staff is enrolled in SEEP training. The majority of them do have that certification, and one of the only people that will not be able to enroll because he is doing his military service is the Director of Planning, and he will be serving his drill weekend.
So Commissioner Ahmet.
Is there anybody else who would like to?
Commissioner Ahmet.
We are going to be consistent.
Okay, I would like to give a public comment then.
All right. It is 9:44 in this meeting, is recessed until 11:00.